You can say that and we're going to get hurt, aren't we? Is it a joke?
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Saturday Planning Committee meeting on this Valentine's Day. First of all, we have no members of the public wishing to speak tonight. And Paul, do we have any orders, Robyn?
So that's all house, my goodness, we need bigger tables.
Thank you. Declarations for interest. Receive any declarations of any personal or presidential interest under consideration on the agenda?
Well, then just to plan out occasions in case they come up chairman at Buckinghamshire Council.
Thank you. As usual. Right. To receive the minutes, the planning committee meeting held on Monday, the 24th of January, which would be before the full council on the 28th of March. Everyone happy with those? Thank you very much. Item four Buckingham neighbourhood plan, Zola Vale Plan, Buckinghamshire Local Plan. Receive any updates Catherine?
Only the date of the next neighbourhood plan working group meeting, which I have forgotten to bring with me, so I will email everybody tomorrow. Well, Paul sent it me and I was in the middle of something else.
It's the end of February, I think, isn't it? February 27th? My memory is certainly right. What's the situation, Sheila? She's off for a while, but she'll be back in time.
I haven't heard.
Right, okay. Thank you very much. North Bucks Parish is planning consortium. Council Ralph is on represent on that. Anthony, we've got your report on the appendix sale. Anything you'd like to add to that?
Yes, to be honest, what I've very quickly done since joining is to take the minutes kindly provided by the secretary and do a bit of a brace on them, whittle them down. And because I think that's about the fairest representation of what has been said and trying to move anything extraneous. And this time I did put an appendix on because ex-councillor Lou Munga did a very, very good report as he requested to on behalf of the Wigan Publicity and I thought we would like to read that in full actual measure. Consequently, I wouldn't normally put an appendix on, but I did this time because I thought it would be relevant and it'd make more sense of the foregoing report. But I have nothing in particular to add. I'm happy to take any questions if I'm required to do so.
Thank you very much. Councillor touch brief.
Yeah, thank you, Anthony, for the report. Thank you for attending. The things which in the report mentioned about the Cambridge Ark, was there any? Has there been any conversations with outside Milton Keynes, up to Shire North Bank or Ark because of the numbers involved in it, if it's taken forward?
No, certainly if you recall from our previous meeting, we received something from one of the parish councils on the South North Hampshire border and I had actually passed that along to the MPPPC and it was circulated by Joe. And I had heard nothing back from that, but certainly remain aware of potential for another 6,000 dwellings that could go there and let's be truthful, if they were barred or stopped from there, there would still be 6,000 dwellings floating about. We didn't really want them floating our way in particular, bearing in mind some quite large developments now going forward just on the borders there anyway. So, but that was on my back, as it were, that I put it out to them, but nothing specific. But they're keeping a very close watching brief and once anything concrete comes forward, they always mention them. So I should be reporting here.
Because Northampton has taken quite a different view to the Ark, isn't it, to Buckinghamshire?
That's right. That's right. And also it's interesting, I don't know if you, so I need to look at my own notes here. On major development issues because of New Longville and Sodden Chase and so on and so forth. And it was suggested here, if I can find anything, that those might actually move into the orbit of Milton Keynes. I didn't say Milton Keynes, but they meant Milton Keynes rather than Buckinghamshire. So again, there's all sorts of things potentially going on, but nothing very concrete. Nothing I can bring to the meeting and say, this is the situation.
The reasoning behind that is because those developments, their services would rely on Milton Keynes.
Precise, precise. Yeah. As would those 6,000 houses, I think, that were suggested in the South North Hampshire.
Thank you. Robin?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Anthony. That would be a boundary change so between the principal authorities if that was the case. Because those areas are in Buckinghamshire or the historic Vale. That might be an interesting conversation. Milton Keynes, I know, were tested by it because they were not supportive of it on, my understanding, on vague grounds that they provided services of which they received no additional support for, because if you live there, you would naturally migrate to Milton Keynes schools, to Milton Keynes health services, to Milton Keynes, whatever. So that's an interesting one. It'd be interesting, it goes forward. The one which is notable, which we didn't mention, of course, Old Stratford, which is a small town really, is going to have 1,500 houses. So that's a percentage in the town size of Old Stratford. So we're talking very large numbers here and we have to be mindful to the fact that Buckinghamshire Council is no longer, as we discussed, part of the Ark group in the sense that they've removed themselves from it. So it could be worth thinking scenarios is all the people on the outside say, well, that's a nice place to put them. They're not the people talking to them. So I don't know what the benefit or wisdom of it is, but that's the decision. So I am think we should monitor it and thank you for going to it because if those figures are parallel, looking at the size of St Stratford and Old Stratford and everywhere else around there, that gives us a guide of what sort of figures they might be talking about for us.
Thank you very much.
Just, yeah, thank you. Just an observation, travelling from St Stratford on the Watling Street towards Crown Hill, there's a massive sign saying 4,330 houses to be built in that area on the right hand side. So is that on top of all this?
That's part of Milton Keynes's own development plan.
You remember originally Milton Keynes Corporation, when it was founded, said they would never ever build west of the A5.
Said the same about east of the M1.
It's like Buckingham would never expand past the boycott.
Sorry, they also said that there was no building going to be taller than one in the trees.
That's right. And they'd never have traffic lights because it's going to all be roundabouts.
Our world changes.
Following all of the councillors such as point about the services, if they're building in South North Hamptons using Milton Keynes services, I believe that people who live in Deanshang at the moment are already able to use a lot of the childcare services, et cetera, that come under Milton Keynes. So that would be an expansion to that, which is seems strange to me is we're not allowed to. I had to go to High Wycombe for an MRI scan last week because I wasn't allowed to get one of Milton Keynes.
Quite exciting, 100 mile round trip. Yeah. Anthony, anything you want to add?
No, I think that's everything.
Thank you very much for your report and thank you for representing us at the forum. So, action reports. We've got those in front of you. I'm just going to mention a couple of them before I throw it open to the meeting. The second item down, street lighting, Tindrit Road also includes speed limits. You'll see there. There is a meeting tomorrow. Most of you will know about that in Tindrit Road at 2.30. Paul did send out an invitation to all councillors. This meeting's been called rather late because there's been some embarrassment down at Buckinghamshire Council that it didn't involve Buckingham Town Council in the first place. And I'm indebted to our good friend Councillor Stutbroe for drawing attention to that. The police will also be there. So anyone who wants to attend, it's at the entrance to the St Bumbos Fields at 2.30 tomorrow Tuesday.
Dunstan, was it? Chairman?
Yeah, Dunstan. Dunstan Way. Next item, bypass bridge. After two and a half years, it's finally, the hole has been filled. They've resurfaced the road and that hole has been filled. They said there was no need to fill it, but they've done it. So, thank you. Caroline?
I would just point out that useful new bit of road and it still goes whoop as you go down towards the bridge.
Councillor Stutbroe.
I mean, I haven't been over it in daylight, so let's expect it in daylight. But one asked them some time ago and it's been on the list and they say they wasn't going to mend it, didn't need mending, but they are supposed to be doing that section of the road period at some point. As they are doing the section of the road, diddles. So Audi, I mean. So I think that maybe this is pre-work till they do some other work, but they didn't actually agree that when Chen raised it, he was concerned was a lot of cracks in the road run parallel with the construction of the bridge. Thank you, pardon. So I do think we need to keep monitoring it because I've got a feeling that the tarmac won't come out. Or should we just go down there and celebrate the fact that we actually jointly have achieved a pudding of tar into the road? Temporary, that may be.
Yes, you're quite right. The section between the Bletchley Road roundabout and Badgers is now chronic. Came along this afternoon and very, very bad there. Just moving further down then, the bottom item, West End Farm. You'll all be aware from the news item I sent up a few days ago about the discovery of Roman skeletons down at Fleet Maston while they're doing the HS2 work. And that just prompted me, because of all the national interest in that and the way that Buckinghamshire Council is congratulating itself on helping publicise it all, that we have now been waiting two years for further news on our skeletons that were found at West End Farm when the aborted care home was starting to be developed. Councillor Stutbroe has had correspondence and you remember that we had a reply from the cabinet member back in October, which we published in our minutes. Have you got any update for us on that, Councillor Stutbroe?
It's brief. I was told, what I was told was confidential and then I wrote back and said it didn't look that confidential to me. Could you explain what part of it was confidential? But on the upside of it is it did read and if they were taking it more seriously than, but not providing any evidence supporting what they were suggesting they were going to do. So I haven't given away anything apart from the fact that I'm continuing to question and I haven't had an answer to my recent email, which was suggesting that I couldn't see what was confidential in it. And please, could you give me a statement that I could read out which was possible to read out to the councils and Buckingham Town Council? Because they are naturally interested in this. I think the chairman raised a very important point in the sense that, you know, if we can have celebrations of archaeology being found in other parts of Buckinghamshire, yet the town that gives Buckinghamshire its name, which is Buckingham, as I point out to them, it's really nice. It's called Buckinghamshire Council. Because at least we're at the front of the name, if not the funding. So they don't like that apparently. But I do think that we need to persist with this. I will carry on asking questions in my North Bucks polite way. And if I'm not satisfied, it will return back to Cabinet for a public question because I am slowly, having corresponded since October, it took to fast Monday, I think, or Sunday to get a response of anything. So I'm not satisfied. But they are saying they take it seriously, not as seriously as we do because they haven't progressed.
Madam Mayor, Councillor Goady.
Thank you. Do we know who owns that land now?
Who owns it?
The land where the skeletons were found.
Well, presumably it was bought by the original developers from West End.
Often they take an option on it until they've got an acquisition.
I don't know, Madam Mayor, but what I would imagine, the history of it was, as Catherine would be more out of dying wacko, is that there was an application which they didn't follow through, which the archaeology works was attached to that application. The council, the planning authority, when drafting the works attached that there was an obligation from the pre-investigation archaeology works, which they did, and the notion that the other works would be funded prior to the start of the development. Then they withdrew, as the correspondence and the cabinet member told us, they withdrew their intentions to develop the site. So the obligations which were under that was not fulfilled. So consequently, we are in a situation where we have gentlemen who may have been visiting Buckingham or lifting Buckingham in boxes on a shelf somewhere, which is no fault of the archaeological company because they haven't actually been paid for their works that they've done. I have asked for the specific costs and I haven't been given those answers because it's going to be a specific amount to finish the work. But as the chairman said, we perhaps should be a little bit, I think we ought to start to be a little bit more vocal about our constant interest in this because it will define Buckingham. It will either tell us that they were Iron Age, Dark Age or medieval or they could be civil war. We don't know that. Apart from the fact that the report did say there was medieval buckles, but that travels a very long period of time, doesn't it? And they could have been in the scant remains. And the only thing we do know is many of the bodies, hands were tied behind their backs and it didn't voluntary go into the cemetery. They were involuntary burials.
Thank you very much, Robin. So we'll keep you posted on what's going on there. There's two items that the town clerk was writing on. One was the sale of county owned land. Has Paul done that? If you don't know. And the other one that the town clerk was writing on was writing to Buckinghamshire Council, asking for criteria for statutory consultees and a list of those. We don't know if that's been...
He hasn't given me any messages.
Right. Anything else on action lists that anyone would like to raise? Caroline?
I think this might be the appropriate note, but it's the S106 on the developments made in Morton. I had an email passed to me from Warren, which from Chrissie Urie, saying that they are now in a position to proceed towards completing the S106 interview briefing and the post committee report. I hope this is resistance. I don't suppose that news has come down to the town council.
Not yet.
It's a bit worrying that S106 is about to be completed without any recourse to the points that have been raised by both Buckingham Town Council and Foxmais Morton Action Group.
These are in response to Kate Price's requests, yes?
The last thing I had, I think, was about a week ago, this strike had prodded the case officer again for a reply to the last letter she sent, which wasn't replied to and the one before wasn't. So the case officer is just not communicating and I don't know what you can do short of getting a march on the gateway.
Because of course it does affect us as a town because some of the second S106 works involve redoing our roads and junctions. Robin?
I haven't seen sight of that correspondence. For other reasons I'll talk about later. I'm constantly in correspondence with Chris Curry. He's a very nice person actually, decent person. And if you can forward me the correspondence, I can read it. Because I would like to know because the section 106 didn't just affect Buckingham East. Buckingham is a community, not a ward, in my opinion. We are a community, Buckingham. We don't have, this is my patch, this is your patch. I'd be very happy to follow it up with because if you give me a note of what your concerns are and I'll follow it up and see what her explanation is. It does seem very strange that you would get that far down an agreement without a note or an explanation. It could be that the reason we're in this situation, and I'm not speaking for them, is because of the legal antagonistic of the situation between the Buckinghamshire Council, the residents, that maybe this has been lost. The communication has been lost because why, those natural reactions have been going on. They haven't got round to actually communicating to us. But I don't want to, I'm not going to correspond about that. I'm going to correspond about the lack of knowledge about it and the points that you raised. Because I think I do need to establish it as a side to that of a conversation, I think, to not confuse the two things together. The obvious carrying on work with the development. And I think if you're happy to forward that to me, I'll take that up and see whether I, I'm not promising I'll get any better response, but I do make a smile now and again. So I might get that.
Thank you, Robin. Thank you very much. Anyone else on action lists? Then we can move on to planning applications, item seven. First on the list tonight is Lloyd's Bank, 19 Market Square. They want to change their external cash machine ATM. Councillor Warren White of Buckinghamshire Council has written in support of it to the Buckinghamshire Plan. Councillor Harvey?
I think no tensions.
We did note to the planning committee, their planning briefing this afternoon, that it was announced this morning that 800 Nat Weston Lloyd's banks are likely to be closed over the next year. So maybe a good sign for us if they're going to replace that ATM. Councillor Tribe and then Councillor Davis. Is there a reason they need to put in a planning application if it was like for like? That's the only reason. If it was somewhere else, it wouldn't even come.
I wouldn't have thought so, no. It's in the conservation area and it's risky.
Thank you. Councillor Davis?
I was just going to say that hopefully we'll be all right with Lloyd's since we're at least the last standing bank. And I believe that they have policy to not close all the banks in a locality, so I shouldn't say it touchwood.
Thank you. Councillor Harvey did want to set something. Councillor Stutbroe?
I think we ought to say for the record, it is our bank for the town council as well when we discuss this. It also is my bank, not that the money I've got in there is anything countable.
You have to declare it interesting.
It is my bank, so I have to declare it. It's not that my money's in there anything comparable to those of the town council. Let's be, get no confusion about that.
Thank you very much. Right.
Wrong, wrong. Well, we won't go there.
Second plan on our list tonight is 25 Walton Road. This is a display of a wall mounted sign for the current practice, which has been there since, well, it was first reported as being there in January last year. Highways have got no problems, providing it's non-illuminated, non-reflective. Everyone happy with that? Thank you. The third item is Bodenham Close, which is in Linden Village. It's a household application for a two-storey side extension above an existing garage proposed and summary annex accommodation and conversion of a garage into a living annex accommodation. The annex is going to have its own separate entrance, although it'll still be on the property. And anyone got any comments on this? Find everyone happy? No problem with parking because they're not increasing the number of bedrooms. The fourth item is number 31 Highlands Road. This is the road that is now basically a dead end road up as far as the back entrance to Buckingham Primary School. On the side of the road which this bungalow sits, there is a street scene of bungalows the whole way along. This by becoming a two-storey building will break that street scene. And I imagine the committee will regret the loss of a bungalow, which is something that we've been very strong on over the years. Councillor Harvey?
It feels like overdeveloped, doesn't it? And I question also whether suspicion car park spaces or the exercise house, maybe the planning clerk has liked it.
There is a lot of room at the front, almost the whole frontage is paved inside the high edge. And once you get to four bedrooms, you can have as many as you like with the same parking spaces.
Councillor Donoghue?
Yeah, I agree with Councillor Harvey. It's overdevelopment and it'd be a shame for us to lose a bungalow. We don't have enough of them as it is. So to have one that's going to be turned into a house, I think that'd be a massive shame.
Thank you. Caroline, on behalf of Buckingham Society?
Yes, well, Buckingham Society, I personally wasn't present at the meeting, but they were supportive of this design and particularly Roger Newell thinks it is innovative design and he supports it personally. And I think the meeting agreed that it was to be supported despite the fact that, yes, it is not exactly harmonising with the street scene of bungalows. I think we would say though, that rather than extend a bungalow further into the property with the extension, this is a house that is more fit for 21st century purposes.
Councillor Dinkler?
Yes, thank you. It just looks out of keeping to me. I mean, if that was somewhere else, then you'd think, yeah, that's, you know, really nicely designed building. But it just feels to me as though it's in the wrong place. And particularly the neighbouring two bungalows going towards the end of that cul-de-sac, it feels as though it can have quite a visual impact on them in that line of bungalows to suddenly have this very striking house.
So we've heard that it's an overdevelopment. Perhaps we've also regret the loss of a bungalow. So is this the grounds on which someone would like to propose that we oppose it?
Yeah.
Thank you, Councillor Davis, actually. You're proposing it and Councillor Donoghue seconding it? Thank you. We'll take a vote on that if we may. All those in favour that we oppose this? Thank you. Items five and six we take together. This is cost cutter, the convenience store in Nelson Street. Play of facial sign, projected sign and two signboards below the bay window. This is a retrospective application. Solicited building in the conservation area and it is right that the entrance to the town, having crossed over the bridge. Councillor Davis?
I think it looks a lot tidier now than it used to.
We would disagree with that.
I thought you might.
The signage is green. There's no harmonisation about it at all. There's too much of it. And it is a listed building and we definitely think that the hoarding is inappropriate to the building.
Councillor Donoghue?
Thank you. I'd say the same. It just looks a hot mess and it's a shame. I mean, their colour scheme kind of blends nicely and it's nice to have pictures of bread and stuff. People wouldn't know what was inside a shop, but, you know, come on, it's just a bit much.
I think a point that was also raised at the briefing this afternoon is that there was no local competition. So it's not as if they're fighting neighbours to get their trade. So what's the general feeling of the committee, Councillor Harvey?
Yes, clearly. I thought all signs picking up a building in the conservation area had to be screen signs, not this one. And the current authorized sign is not.
No, they have utilised the previous sign, which had been there for some time, and just put their own name on it.
So could we have a proposal then for how we handle this? It seems that the general feeling at the meeting is it's too much.
Yeah, I suppose that we, I mean, what can we refuse it on? Gordiness? I mean, what's the legal?
Catherine?
Well, it is a signage application, so we can just say that it's too much signage for a conservation area on a listed building. There you go.
At the interest of that.
Yeah.
Councillor Murray?
That's all of it, including the Nelson local and, well, just the hoarding at the bottom, which is...
It's probably the parts on the bottom, isn't it, that, you know, they've taken photographs of the inside of the shop to put outside, which is and handle what they sell.
Yeah, I agree to some extent with what Councillor Daly said about it. It looks neat. And I think that sign at the top does look neat. And it would be good if generally they tidied up the appearance of it, but remove, and maybe the opportunity when they remove those lower panels, which are clearly excessive, would be then to maybe sort of patch up any holes or problems there are and make it look even neater. Because I think overall it does look neat.
Yeah, this, I think basically we're talking about the... what's below the bay windows. Yes, it's a real mess, I mean. Uh, Catherine will know how to, i- if the committee agrees, Catherine will.
Yeah.
Yeah. Pose it on those grounds. Perhaps of your usual thing about we may be minded to change. It's certainly all the applications doing to, tonight had statutory notices put up, so they're, they're doing very well actually, Aylesborough, they're, they're well up to date. They, they had a blitz on the seventh of February.
I, I beg to differ. The listed building one hasn't got one up yet. They've drafted.
Which one's that, the?
The, um, three to eight. The cost cutter one, the, the top one has a, has a.
Oh, but not, oh, not the listed building part of it?
The listed building one, the draft is in the file, but it's not been posted yet.
Right, thank you, okay.
But then it did arrive a week after the other one.
So half of it has been. Right, um, amended plans, number seven. This is the University of Buckingham's prayer room that they um, came to us first in August about installation of a log building to provide a multi-phase prayer room together with associated drainage works. Uh, we strongly objected because of the loss of parking. They were going to do with, with, um, number of parking space, places, including the only disabled parking space. Um, we posted on those grounds. The university came back with what you see now amended plans. They're now offering up to sixteen parking places, which will answer the two objections on the oral from people who live close by pointing out that Station Road is already an overfilled car park. Um, what members feel about this? Council Harvey?
So are these extra spaces or are these reallocating existing spaces to? Because I mean, the spaces behind are the university staff and the spaces in the car park are the university staff. I don't, I don't quite understand.
We'll see, o- on the, um, plans, you'll see that they have made all these additional parking spaces available now, three immediately behind the dairy and another, um, seven, another sixth at the very back, two of which are electric charging points and they're proposing to turn these over to the, uh, users of the prayer room. The other thing that came up this afternoon, of course, is this doesn't just mean Sundays or weekends. Um, you know, people of Muslim faith worship on Fridays, um, Jewish on Saturdays, other people Sundays, so it, it, I think the universities can have to accept that they're going to lose those spaces certainly Friday, Saturday, Sunday, if they want to use them for other things. But what's the general feeling of the meeting? Karen?
And just to say that, um, I've, I've actually read all the questions on the Delta Planning as well as the Vice Chancellor. And I can see that it's a facility that is much needed. But we still haven't had an answer as to why it has to be there from, on other land that the university owned. I noticed that the lady from Delta Planning says very firmly it can't be on the innovative site and it can't be on the board football ground. Uh, but she doesn't explain why and why it has to be there. I would like an explanation as to why it has to be there, yeah. That's how we.
Yeah, she, she answered why it couldn't be in other places, didn't she? But she said it couldn't be four bedded because of the flooding, it couldn't be innovate because that will soon be, uh, developed, um, et cetera, et cetera. You just mentioned, um, the university vice chancellor's letter.
Yeah.
That's something that we picked up. Um, he wrote a rather, you know, censorial letter saying, um, the offer for this, which has come from the parents of a student who tragically died, um, has been made, but there's been so many delays. And he said, while I respect and understand that due diligence and process need to be followed, um, the parents are disappointed the time it's taken to process the application have indicated their funding pledge could be given to another institution if there's further delays. Well, it's not Buckingham Town Council or is it Buckinghamshire Council who've been responsible for the delays? It's the agents of the university who put the wrong plans in to start with. That's what's caused all the problems. And perhaps it might be worth us, uh, just letting Mr., responding to Mr., just, just to let him know, it's his stuff, it's not, not us. We, we're here to help the university, help the town.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, my own personal feeling is that they're providing one disabled parking space out of sixteen. That's too few. That there is room for another one. I looked, I went there this afternoon, I don't know. I'd thought at a minimum two disabled parking spaces if, if we minded to approve this application.
That's great.
Council Harvey?
Could I suggest also that we ask them to consider, um, adding a solar panels to the roof and some grey water recycling to encourage the ecological, I meant to say the same, by the way, you have got item, item three as well. So the new application coming through, whether we approve it or not, we should be saying, what about sort of hours, what about grey water recycling? And that's, that's certainly this.
That's seems to have met general approval, so. So are we minded this time to say yes, subject to, uh, to, to disabled parking spaces and, and use of recycled water?
Yeah, not subject to, but saying that we would, we would advise.
Like to see that, yeah. Thank you. Encouraged, yeah. Is everyone happy with that?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And we will drop a line to, on Vice Chancellor just to, uh.
As long as it's with order, I'm abstaining.
Yeah, did you want to say anything on it, Robin?
No, just that I shall abstain in cases come to the committee.
Right. So that's summed. Um, there are three tree applications, all which have been dealt with already by email. So if everyone's happy with that, just, uh, Council Davis?
I just wondered why, um, Stade Avenue, which we currently know is in Cheltenham, comes to Buckingham Town Council. Because that's, it's partly, um, in Cheltenham, Radcliffe and Cheltenham Parish and partly in Stowe Parish. And I haven't seen it come to Radcliffe.
I can't answer that, Chris.
Well, originally, the, um, documents submitted showed that it was the southern part of the avenue. And I said, but those are protected trees, so why are you doing this as a conservation area application? And it came back with a Google map only slightly altered so that you could see that it was actually both sides of the bit north of the crossroads.
Sorry, which one? So north of the crossroads?
I mean, if you, if you, if you.
But that's, that's, that's very clear.
Yes, I know. I expect they've asked them as well now because they sent it to us in the first place because it was the southern part of the avenue that was marked on the map. And it was only when I challenged it saying, but that is a protected tree area, which fronts a conservation area, I'm sorry to say. Um, and, um, the last time we had some trees in Stowe Avenue, um, they were marked in the New Inns car park because that's the address of the gentleman who made the application. So we're not actually winning really.
Yeah, Arthur.
No, not really.
We, we, we are consulted about things on our boundary, but no, we were consulted on this because it was in the wrong place in the first place.
It, it just, it hasn't come to Radcliffe and Cheltenham itself.
Has it actually come up yet?
No, it hasn't, no.
I guess it will.
Well, it, it's because trees are not for consultation, Radcliffe and Cheltenham might not do that. I mean, it's only because members have specifically limited that they want to be asked about tree applications.
We do, we do get tree, yeah.
But do you circulate them for consultations?
We, we, yeah, yeah, they are.
Well, thanks for raising that. Council Satchby, Robin?
This, this time round, we aren't losing any trees, we're having tree works. The town council, after a interesting discussion, agreed that it recognized the importance of the canopy of trees in Buckingham that it would seek, um, the community to also recognize the importance of the canopy of trees in Buckingham. Would it be appropriate for the planning committee, which was the original source of the motion, when it came from here, to now consider how best it wants to make a statement around the intentions of the council to look after the canopy and the arboretum, which is Buckingham as a community? I always suggest that this have been the most appropriate committee to make a statement, being as it was the committee which was the source of, of reason for the motion from Council Antony Ralph and myself. I'd be interested if Council Antony Ralph feels that's appropriate. And it would then be, it's, it's just to let the community know that we are monitoring these things and that we have concerns about them on the grounds that we did discuss.
Not more environment business?
Um, no.
I don't, I don't think I have anything to add, uh, to what Council Satchby just said.
Well, it, it, it was.
I mean, we were, were hoping to hold a tree officer or so up here, not the ones from the old AVDC area, the county tree people, because they're the ones now with the power and they don't talk to people like Neil. Um, I will point out that there is a felling. The middle one has got a tree felled. It's a holly.
Which is rather resonates with what we discussed. There's not a lot of point in discussing something as a council and voting on it and agreeing it and then doing nothing and saying we'll refer it to here, refer it to there. That rather means that you didn't really mean what you said in the first place and that, that you are contested or disjointed in your opinions about it. It's only that I think that it's inappropriate to make a comment from planning committee that we've been following council's ambitions to be a, um, custodian and treason that people look after, look out for their treasons and raise concerns when they think it's appropriate. I think that's what I would be asking. I don't really want to go through an environment committee discussing this again, in the sense that we settled at council, it wasn't environmental issue, it came from the planning. We just those, it's just, um, we either ignore what the council says, we do nothing about it, which sets a dangerous precedent, or we actually do something with it. Um, if members don't want to, it sets a precedent which can be followed later down.
My understanding from the council decision last week is that we were waiting until we'd had more discussion with the county tree people before we made a press release. Maybe I didn't grasp that.
I didn't hear that.
I didn't hear that.
I didn't hear that. I'm afraid you must have been in a different meeting than me, because I didn't hear that.
I wonder, as we have a climate emergency and that becomes a pan, pan committee discussion point as appropriate, I wonder if this is, falls almost into the same sort of criteria where primarily it can be considered an environmental, uh, point, but, um, because if it spreads across, it can be considered as a pan committee discussion point when appropriate.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. I feel a bit uncomfortable about us saying as planning committee, this is our remit or for the environment committee to say the same because it is broader than that.
Correct.
Um, and we did agree that we would support the, uh, the motion, um. But it, we're not, I mean, there are going to be trees that will have to be felled, but that, where we have lost a lot of trees that didn't need to be felled. And that's the issue that we need to address is how can we, um, from now on, what can we do to reduce that? I, I know, sorry, it's a bit of a side, but I was really bothered about those trees that, um, behind the church. Those three, was it three conifers? And I noticed when I walked past there, they've gone now.
Hmm.
They've gone in the last week or ten days. And I'm sad about that, I really am. I feel it was unnecessary. And I think we should possibly, I, I mean, I think I might have been prepared to take some direct action over those trees, but it didn't happen. But maybe we should be doing what we can to explore the possibility of planting our side of that wall. Some substantial trees to replace those.
That's a nice one.
On our land, if that is our land.
It is.
Yeah.
It is. Well, just to move it forwards to the chair. Do you think this is something that is appropriate, that we, we work on a statement of intention? When I say statement of intention about being custodians of the trees that we examine and that we will take full responsibility to represent those trees in the best of our abilities to protect the arboretum and Buckingham. The environment committee can then take that up in the sense that it would be environmental committee responsibility to replace those trees if we chose to from its budgets and choose some trees. That's taking a direct action to replace what we consider are wrong. Uh, and, and then try to make sure that it worth, it's worth something going forward, because if we do nothing with it, we've got through till Friday and nothing happened. If you get through to next week, I mean, there's danger with this that, that we make a decision, the council was well discussed. Madam Mayor kept order very well. It was well discussed and, and I think we do need to see an action from it, otherwise we are in danger of, of, um, not doing anything and time drags on. And it was originally, and there was good reason for it, Madam Mayor, we were in the midst of pandemic and we were very conscious of not keeping everyone into the room in, 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 um, during the COVID restrictions and, and we decided with Madam Mayor's advice that we didn't actually discuss it at the earlier meeting. So it would have been discussed long ago. So we're getting into the year now and it would be a shame we got to May and decided this was the year of the tree because that would be, um, a bit late, wouldn't it?
What's the thing we can do tonight on that? Because we don't have it on the agenda. It's, it's, we're discussing it under the item of trees, but we need an, an agenda item for a motion to make a statement of intent, which I thoroughly support. You wish for that to be on the next planning committee?
I, I think that I'm guided, it's not me, it's truth and it's not, it's not about me, it's about the truth. I'd be guided on how we proceeded it, but I think the majority of people were very supportive.
Margaret?
Yeah, on, on that, um, because I think one of the objections to that motion was that there was no action involved in this. So maybe we should indeed on the next planning committee have a, um, an, a gender item of what action should we take as a result of that decision to call council to declare twenty twenty-two the year of the tree. What follows from that?
Would you like to propose that?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Thank you, Council Donoghue.
That's a sensible way forward.
Yeah, so all those in favour? Thank you. So I'll go on to the next, um, agenda. So if there's, um, anyone against abstentions? One abstentions? Thank you. Um, moving on to item eight, planning decision for the couple that were floating, um, twelve thirteen Market Hill, part of your extension, provided storage area, we were concerned about fire risks and the lots of fire escapes and the, the only method of escape from the first, from the ground floor in the event of a fire might have been by lift. Um, it has been approved. And the planning officer said she believed that there were adequate fire escapes being retained and that in any case, any fire risk would be dealt with by building regulations. Um, that's been approved. So there's nothing further we can do. Corker Hill Farm has been refused. Um, we opposed this on, or we did ask, we deferred a decision on asking for further information. This goes back to twenty nineteen. It was now being refused, applying application protections from the garage. And twelve thirteen Market Hill again, but this is the flats above alteration of ground floor and changing use of upper stories to line flats. That has been opposed as well. And the planning officer gave a number of reasons, including it did not comply with Buckingham neighbourhood plan. Um, as, as regards to providing adequate, you know, enjoyable living accommodation, there were too much of the same. Um, so that has been turned down. Not on the agenda tonight, I'll just mention it in passing, um, Southern Boswell Court. We dealt with at the last meeting of an application to fence in amenity land, which properly up on page hold and bought some years ago. That's been refused for the same grounds as to Mallard Drive. Proposed change of use of land and erection of a close board fence is unacceptable and would result in loss of valuable open amenity space, which contributes to the character and appearance of the area. They also said that the proposed two-point-one metre high fence would be too high and introduce an uncharacteristic form of boundary treatment.
Excellent.
So again, we're, we're starting to win on this, something we're banging off the pages.
Very.
So, Council Harvey?
I think our hit rate, as it were, is better now than what it was under AVDC, quite impressive. I think we're getting, I think we're being heard more by Buckinghamshire Council.
I suppose it's, it's a fresh broom, isn't it? Council Satchby?
It could be something in that, but if I was to be scurrying mongering, um, there hasn't been that many planning committee meetings to which the plans go to. Most meetings seem to be postponed or objected, so it could be. Most meetings seem to be postponed or objected, so it could be that the town council is using more in line with the officers' view. And and less in line with the people who sat around the council meeting. But then I couldn't possibly say that was so, because I'd have to produce the evidence. But you could conclude that there is a, there's a definite um conjunct correlation of those two events. Thank you.
The statistics will be on the next agenda, I will still in the March meeting.
Thank you very much.
We'll be able to see if it's true.
Right, item nine tonight, Buckinghamshire Council matters. We start with any news of Buckinghamshire Council new documents. Catherine. Right, and other information from any Buckinghamshire Council members present. Councilor Stutbro, I believe you've had some
Yeah.
some success over the Tindrick Road footpaths.
Yeah, let me start for those members of the council you who weren't here, because it's unfair, I apologize for those who were. The Tindrick Road development, when we as a council and I as a then county councillor, um the development was being agreed, we fought hard as a community to get the roundabout in and the cycle way in. I've been in various correspondence over quite a long time now with the um over section one O six to do with that element of the development. What I have established is that they do agree that we have a cycle way to be constructed, which was one of the main points of the Buckingham neighbourhood plan. It was the main point Buckingham Society, the town council put into it. What we are not in agreement is is the timing of its construction. And please step in anyone who corrects me if ready if I'm wrong. Um they, it says in the section one O six that on completion of such as its property, it should be constructed. But we clearly have got past that date now, that they've constructed nearly most of the houses and haven't constructed the cycle way. Now, we are conscious, weren't we, when we did that, that the cycle way should go in to actually make safe routes for children to get to both the primaries and the secondary schools. That hasn't happened, so I I'm I'm still contesting the argument with them as from this morning. Because um they say in their deliberations that, you remember when we discussed this? Um with the support of Catherine and everyone, that we we got to the point where we wanted a gravel path through which is St Rumble's Well area. Um and they were contesting that it should be a grass path. Now, can't claim any full credit, because I had a lot of support, but um um I've now gone back to them pointing out, and it says clearly in the section one O six is that that is a gravelled path to the scenic walkers, which is Derek, councillor Derek, I'd say councillor Derek, I should correct me if I said anything different. Because he was very um always making sure we knew that was the scenic walk and the other was the railway walk. So we are where we are. I think this is probably treading into the case that we need to raise an enforcement case on the fact that I believe with advice from Catherine and that I've shared my correspondence both with the mayor Anthony and and the chairman of the committee, just to assure them what I'm doing. I think we now got to a case where they're in breach of their own section one O six and not completion of their planner case in in in, and we can't let this go. The part of the correspondence suggested it wasn't a high priority, which I went back, as you can imagine in my normal North Bucks, suggesting the contrary. Um that it was a high priority, because it was a priority when the development was agreed for the safety of the children to get to school. I'm minded to the fact that tomorrow, those of us who are fortunate, who are able to attend, who are not working and having to be at work, will be attending a meeting to do with thirty the thirty mile an hour uh uh speed limit on the Tindrick Road. So I'm conscious that the two things aren't related, but if by any chance we're not getting a reduction of speed limit, Johnny well do need to get the children off the highway and going down that railway walk. Now, I can't be any more polite than I have been. And I'm not the best, my English isn't as good as it could be, and anyone who's read my correspondence probably has quite fun. But um but um I am doing it, so I think that with some discussion agreement through the chair, who's ready and and Anthony and the mayor, where we go with this, because I'm worried that we could get to a point where the whole estate's constructed. It hasn't been done, the path isn't in there, the children then are in cars, not on foot. And we end with um a a tailgate um situation of parents going to their favourite choice of school. So I leave it there, but that's my view.
Thank you, Councilor Stutbro. That will come up on item twelve tonight, enforcement has been noted, the town clerk has also asked if we do that.
Yeah, one one other item, which I'm going to bring back to you once I met to discuss Ozzy Way the other day, I was fortunate enough that there's some really good minutes of what I had to say, I apologize that, because it's quite a lot. Um but um but they are, I think I was reasonably pointed and direct with them. I think that they need to come back to um to us to 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 send out how we progress that. Because there were some things in that meeting which I was not happy about. And once I've got those notes, I can go back and try to pursue some of the highway issues. So I'm following that up as well, because Ozzy Way is here, it's happening. What we've got to do is get out of it. And the one thing which I was concerned about, which I learned after that meeting in the evening, is that it appears that Corker quite rightly, because they are part of the land in that area land, are already in discussions with the officer over elements that they would like out of the section one O six. So I would suggest that if we are not in discussion with him, when the large proportion of the development will take place in the Buckingham remember that I represent Corker as well when I say this, so um I've got to look after both parishes as a Buckinghamshire council, which I'm speaking as now. Um I think that we need to give a note to Paul, perhaps he made sure that he, on his return from entitled leave, that 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 is a top priority, because there's only a certain amount of money and influence can go into that. And I don't criticize the other parish for being involved, but it appears that conversations take place and not with us from my conversations, which will carry on um as I do. I I won't go into anything else, because it's not to do with planning, but um I hope that's
Thank you, Robin. Anyone have any questions for our Shire Council members? Carolyn.
Just going back to the Tindrick Road, Rumble's Fields. Um you obviously have read the S one O six, it's pretty more risky than me. And and I believe there was something in it um which made the developer responsible for some repair to the well itself.
Yes, um that was my summer conversation. Um 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 I I had a conversation with all of them on teams, because they wouldn't meet because of the virus. Not that I am the virus, but there was a virus out there. And um and I did have a tease meeting with them, of which I did, I believe, keep town clerk copied into that correspondence, because it it went into several areas which were to do with the ambitions of the town council, um which the council has decided to enter into discussions with them, and the ambitions of the land and what the obligations were on that. And I have brought that up then. I'm very, very happy if you send me the section that you're referring to. Um because I'm sure they won't talk to me again tomorrow. Um
I can't read it tonight.
No, but if you can find that section and and point it out to me, you can be assured that it will be added to my list of conversations to such a point that they are so annoyed with me that they will actually meet down and sit down with me and have a proper conversation about these things. That is the end result usually.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Robin. Um line two is to receive slides and the question answers from the corporately planning department meeting, which is organised by uh B B M L on the twenty sixth of January. Um these are all in your agenda pack, but I am giving a brief verbal report around that. I attended this meeting together with Catherine, um we sat in here to watch it. Um and together with Winslow Town Councillor Roy van der Pol, we raised concerns about our section one O six agreements and about the community infrastructure levy. National Planning Policy Framework Guidelines state, this is very important. A section one O six agreement is an agreement between the developer and a local planning authority about measures that the developer must take to reduce their impact on the community. Our section one O six is, along with Winslow Town Council, was the lack of consultation about what section one O six contributions should be made towards. Elsby Vale remains the only part of Buckinghamshire which does not benefit from the nationwide SIL, Community Infrastructure Levy. We were told at the meeting that section one O six agreements will remain in place until the current government planning white paper becomes enacted, at which time both SIL and section one O six are likely to be replaced by a national infrastructure levy. It was agreed at last week's full council, you remember, that Buckingham Town Council will adopt a new two-part approach to sports and recreation section one O six agreements, and will put forward a wish list in advance of new developments, as well as including it in the revised Buckingham neighbourhood plan. It is also noted that Elsby Vale Local Planning Authority, then AVDC, now of course Buckinghamshire Council, had asked for no developer contribution towards health provisions in recent years, including for developments such as four hundred dwellings at St Rumble's Fields or four hundred and twenty land of Ozzy Way. On checking planning archives, Catherine found there'd been had been R beam done since twenty thirteen. Two thousand one hundred new dwellings in Buckingham Mates Wharton, adding potential five thousand two hundred and fifty patients to Swan practice. This is not a matter for this committee tonight, but will be discussed interim council on March the seventh. You'll also see from the PowerPoint slides, the countywide BC planning policy team has twenty two officers with six vacancies at the moment, that enforcement has twenty staff with three vacancies. We introduced the new neighbourhood planning coordinator, Rachel Rea. We feel we look forward to working as we revise our Buckingham neighbourhood plan. That's my brief report from that meeting. As I say, there's plenty more information on those PowerPoints and the questions and answers that we and other parishes and towns ask. Robin?
Yeah. I mean, I'm not going to discuss section one O six, we're going to do that at full council in a proper way about health provisions. And I don't want to repeat the conversation, try to think it better that we do that in a matrix where it's all in balance. The chairman's completely right, um and it's even worse than we anticipate, because um what's current situation is that the inclusion um of the Vale Plan being agreed by Buckinghamshire Council, which I didn't support, because he didn't support Buckingham, um when other people voted um for it, who were against against it in other ways, it was quite strange. That actually doesn't make any provision. It's not part of a condition within the Vale Plan, which I'll be corrected if I'm wrong, I'm sure soon after this. But my understanding of it is that there was no provision for health provision. So you've got a situation where there's no legal powers within that development plan, which has been going from twenty thirteen to twenty twenty two, that nobody thought to um add health into it. The other thing which is we need to consider when we talk this again is that one of the criterias for adding health into it, my understanding is that the CCG, the Bob, the um um Health Trust, whichever person is, actually makes an observation that there needs to be a contribution. So though I may, in the interim, said nothing was done, clearly nothing was done to come curry any from them, because we can evidently say, can't we, that we have been well aware of needs in Buckingham and well aware of the simple things since the Vale Plan, Buckingham's grown by three thousand people since the Buckingham Plan. So we are really running up against a real problem here. And our SIL isn't going to affect Buckingham until the the Buckinghamshire Plan comes in or the government policy brings it in, in whatever form it does. We don't know what form they'll introduce SIL in. Because if you remember, the government white paper did make some overtones about pooling development monies to for the greater good. So you could get a situation, not that it would ever happen in Buckinghamshire, would it? Where we'd have um fifty thousand houses in Buckingham and they'd pull the section one O six money for the greater good and deliver some highways in Marlow. Um so um or something, not that that would ever happen, would it? Um but um I worried about that legislation, so I think we need to, at the point that's published, discuss that intently. And because it does put us at risk. But thank you for the chairman, Ray, but we are right, we're going to take that to um the next
interim on March.
On March, because it's an important issue that needs to be discussed as a separate item. But I have some information which I'm not going to put into the public at this time.
Anyone else got any comments or questions? Carolyn?
Something just struck me in the question and answer session that you're referring to, and I've pushed it here in the bow. It's really to do with um monitoring developments. And I noticed that the answer says the onus is on the applicant to implement their planning permission correctly. And I have odd fellow's hall in mind here. The planning system is not designed to require proactive monitoring of development under construction or to provide any form of check, that completion has been satisfactorily achieved. I mean, I I I really could not believe my eyes reading that. My planning system. And what's the point of a planning system? It it it's it's a Kafkaesque situation. And someone who's really pointing this out, they must have responsibility for how then the is constructed. And we all know what's happening with odd fellow's hall, it's absolutely appalling. And it is affects the immunity of so many residents, it is not fair on existing communities.
Thank you.
Point made.
Well made.
Anyone have any other comments? No, thank you. We'll move on then to Catherine's updated list of undecided opposed and attended calling. All noted? Thank you. Um item ten, Buckinghamshire Council Committee Meetings, North Bucks Area Planning was cancelled last week and Strategic Sites Committee was cancelled on January the twentieth.
Ah but chairman, we did attend a site meeting, but I got talking to a house Asian dog for fifteen minutes and they were all at a wait for me, because the dog was really quite nice and I didn't go to the right place, because the post go run. So we have had site meetings, so that's something, isn't it?
Councilor Trug? Am I to assume from memory that this is becoming a regular occurrence?
The number of council meetings will be under stats for next meeting.
But it it um
I would say
is greater than the actual meetings.
And a meeting about once a month, I think there have been three.
Yeah, there's now sixty five staff in planning in total. Planning policy, section one O six, enforcement, et cetera, but the more planning staff, the less meetings we seem to.
So it's being decided by a civil servant, high banking
officer.
Officer, rather than by committee.
Who lives in York.
I saw that in Lou Monger's uh report, yes.
Councilor Stutbro.
I think a wise person would ask the question. Wh- what is the group of people who decide whether it's a planning application, which is important enough to go to committee?
What's the group of people?
Yeah, the the correction, is it the chairman?
It's the chairman and the business manager.
Exactly. So what you've got to draw the conclusion, the chairman must be even satisfied that he didn't need to meet the officers in a meeting. Or the officers convince the chairman that there's no need for a meeting. Um so the only way
The business manager was looking at the bottom line.
Then the business manager's looking at the bottom line, yeah. Um so it obviously is more economic than for them to do that. But I do think that it would be, the methodology of the way that a decision is taken about whether an application is important, there will come a time, won't there, that something will go through, which isn't called in by a member at the request of the town council or any other member, the public can often put a call something in. And it goes through this matrix and the town has something happen that it doesn't want. Now, there is a danger of that, I'm not saying it's going to happen, but um but I do think that we should write to them and ask them how they come to conclusion, because that would give us a clue what they're doing it for. I think during the previous um operations, there was talk about only so many applicants. I think during the previous operations, there was talk about only so many applications need to go to planning committees, but if you look at other areas in conjunction to this, they seem to be meeting more regularly than we are in North Bucks. Whether they don't trust the North Buck councils as much, or whether we just have for some reason been missed, but I know councils, because I've got work with councils on other planning committees, who are meeting more, seem to be meeting more regularly than we are. I think we need to ask that and then ask, how do we compare with other planning areas and other planning committees for the amount of applications which come to committee? Because if we are in tandem with them, there's a current policy, but if we've only met, say, once or twice and they've met on every cycle, something is different, isn't it? And, and we can't make accusations, but it could be that there is.
Thank you. Castle Try.
Castle, come back on that. So what you're saying is that planning applications are being decided upon by the council staff and not by duly elected members of the council?
They have a legal right under the mood to do it by delegated powers, except for the managers in conjunction with the chair of the committee to decide whether that application goes forward. I understand it's the chair of the committee, because he would have to be consulted, because it's his responsibility, or she. So it would appear that they're coming to a conclusion that these applications need to go to delegated powers.
And if a member call, a shire member calls it in, that doesn't override that?
It can be stopped, yeah, it can be, but a situation can be, whether it's important enough then to go to committee and they have to justify it to the shire member, because I called the Ganderton stroke, next to Ganderton's application to committee, that was decided against the application, even though I'd called it to committee. So they never consulted me about whether I wanted that to go to committee after I called it into committee. Catherine's got a note of my calling, because when it came here, it was just before the election, or a week, ten days, or something weeks before the election, and, and it was quite prominent. The application has been turned down for that by the crossing opposite the new inn. But I did call it to committee, but it never came to committee. Now, I could go back on another discussion with them why that was so, but as the application was in tune with the feeling of Buckingham Town Council, I didn't think that was a very constructive argument to have. So I didn't, but that was against the calling. So what you said, Castle Try, just followed.
Castle Harvey?
Um, do I dare say I told you so? Because ever when the constitution went through, I said this is actually a, an officer-led mandate that has been changed here, that even though we got our rights to call things in, but we didn't have before, but it's a way of getting constructive. It was all power of the officers, because even the chair of the committee is only advisory, they still do the head of the constitution. So I am saying we are, I suggest you.
Thank you.
Apart from one thing, I'd correct on one point. If the town council wants to call an application into committee, as far as I understand, that that will end up having to go to committee, or they'll have to have a discussion with the town council, no point that they come to that. Just because I've got one point that I've raised where I'd a calling, that doesn't set a, that doesn't set a trend, that's just an ob, that's an observation. What I can't do is say what the trend is, that's why, to, to, to confirm your, your, you could be absolutely right, Council Harvey, and I hope you are wrong, but I think you may be proved right. But, but I do think we need to make observations rather than take isolations and, and then.
Had a chance to test it yet.
We haven't tested, but I think we need to sort of see the journey and then, and you can turn around to us and say, I told you so, John, and we'll say you told us right. But I don't think we're there yet, John.
Thank you. Can we move on please to item eleven, destination for unused section one O six monies? Catherine, there's done a report here following an email from the section one O six monitoring on this. Catherine, if you'd just like to talk us through exactly what we're looking at?
Um, yes, this is Lace Hill, section one O six. This was two thousand and nine, and it would, at the time, it looked as though everybody on Lace Hill who was going to do any shopping apart from Tesco's was going to come into the town centre, so we needed more parking spaces. So they wrote this, um, section one O six clause in, they spent a hundred grand on Stratford Fields Car Park, although I have to say for the life of me, I can't see where. And they've got eighteen thousand left over designated to help in parking in Buckingham for the people of Lace Hill. I have tried to find out how much eighteen grand will buy. And that's, I don't know, you imagine a brick wall with a jelly on the front of it? But I was talking to councillor White on Saturday and he suggested that I went to Leoni at the community board because she's recently funded some of that, so she would be able to say, but she didn't get back to me today. But it is in, it's getting cheaper, he says, and the main cost is a suitable electricity supply. If you've got a suitable electricity to supply, and he, he thought we'd probably put in for three charging places at Stratford Fields, which is an all-day free car park, which is a good place to complete, unless members have any better ideas of the use, but it would have to be parking related or we would have to go through the legal calaver of varying the section one O six agreement to make it possible to spend it on something else. And you know how long legal people take, and we could run out of time and then we'd lose the money altogether.
Thank you for your report, Catherine. Um, Castle Touchbury?
I'm happy to go along with proposing that we seek to do it in then, in there and let the legal people of Buckinghamshire Council discuss it, the people connected to the site, because my, to find a source of electricity in there, it would probably have to be something to do with the athletic club, but I think we agree that they do that, and just with a caveat, that if they haven't able to do that, that we look for correct, corrected signage for the car park, because if you come down the road, Stratford Road here, unless you knew the car park was there to park free, you could drive past it quite easily. And remember the issues at the weekends by the Athletic Club, which is prime nuisance site, because they leased the entire site, so. So I think that with that, add that caveat that improved signage for the car park and Weston Avenue Car Park, because they are free, so improve signage to free car parks for people who work in the town. You might not know they're free because maybe it's bothered to tell them in a long time. It'd make a lot of difference to a person with the downfall of the rising cost of living if they knew where they could park for nothing, wouldn't it?
Thank you. Any comments on that? Is that what we should follow then? Catherine's suggested recommendation? And then if that, if there's any problems in that, then we fall back on what Robin suggested about that. Thank you very much, that's, that's helpful. Enforcement, we heard earlier from Council Touchbury about the problems with the footpath that connects the new estate at St Rumbold's Field with the railway walk. The section one O six condition is absolutely clear. It's proposed that it's a breeden gravel path that went across St Rumbold's Field to connect up with the railway walk. And the, was that part of the section one O six agreement? We also heard that it should be, should have been completed before the first houses were occupied. We talked to the town clerk about this, his advice is that we should report this as an enforcement matter, that the condition has been breached. Everyone agree with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed.
Castle Touchbury?
I think this is important and true fact that they'll be raising it as an enforcement issue. We jolly well have to raise it with education, because it's linked to education and safety of children, there's a safety issue here, which is the welfare of young people getting to school, that this hasn't been progressed, that's the first thing. We also have to raise it with the cabinet members for highways, because this is, this is an uplift of footpaths and highways of which hasn't happened, section one O six. And we also have to raise it with the cabinet members for planning, all in separate letters, to say that we're disappointed that the planning department hasn't progressed this and we have raised enforcement case because of our concern on the other three, two points. That way, it'll be interesting to see who writes all three replies and, and, and how they, whether they hate, were writing one reply to three people. I'd be interested to see what the three replies are, because I think there's a safeguarding issue here. This is about the welfare of young people, over above what our conversation might be tomorrow, and we don't know what the outcome of that conversation is until we've had it. But if they are going to say no on one ground to us and they haven't pursued the other ground, they are, have a, you know, this is, this is about young people's wellbeing and safety, which was what we said earlier, wasn't it? That that was the primary reason of doing it.
Thank you. Um, Catherine, do you?
Thank you. I don't know if we can, but it would be nice to get feedback from those that live around the schools, because by not having the path put in, they have obviously made children that aren't able to walk to school a cycle, get in parents' cars and have been, been living across the road from one, this has definitely increased my traffic, I would say. But I know that Lace Hill have got a business association, we have one in the village, whether, and I don't know about Buckingham Primary School, but whether locals can be contacted and asked.
I think just putting it out on social media, I think that's possibly more comprehensive.
Yeah.
Castle Harvey?
No, they won't.
I just think we need more crossings on that road. At the moment, you know, the new, the new bit of the sector studio on the right-hand side, the difficulty you go up is, at the moment, any, any young person or however family who live there, whether get from there to school, to the upper secondary schools, have to go across that road by, by the scenic walk and so on. I just, I think safety has just been overlooked completely.
Yeah.
When they came to do this, it's coincidence.
On that area, you remember that the chairman raised his concern about one of the crossings being put in incorrectly and in the wrong place? We did, I went back to the officer responsible, that was taken out, because it was adjacent to the entrance of the new construction on the other side. The crossings there, that I understand, are in keeping with what was agreed within the section one O six, so we should have criticised them for putting something in which is in, we should just ask them to put all the other stuff in that they haven't put in. But I do share your concerns about the crossings, the, the other matters in with safety, the two seven eights end at the development, that's what, nothing, no contributions. So the reason we were able to get the railway walk into it, because it was contiguous with the development, because it touched on the road and it was to do with the cycleway which to, to school. What we haven't done, John, is get across that, I completely agree with you, but how we approach that now, because there's no legal basis to go back to the developer to ask that money. It, it would have to be funded out of something else. We will have a new chair of the community board soon, so we could approach the new chair of the community board and ask him if he's, would support a conversation about crossings across that piece of road. But what we can't do is rewrite history, that's why we're concentrating on the very point that we've got a strong grounds on in enforcement, which is getting that done. But I don't disagree with you, John.
A lot of this, of course, is contiguous with whether or not we can get a speed limit there, because you cannot have crossings where there's.
That'll be tomorrow's question.
Yeah. Uh, Council Davis, then, Council Gay.
And I may have missed it, but is there, is there any update on the, the streetlights on that piece of road?
That was in the action list earlier on.
Was it, sorry?
About the ongoing correspondence over streetlights, so that, that was another matter. Yeah. We need to move on. Council Gay.
I was going to make that very point, that, you know, as Council Touchbury raised the issue of safety, you know, the two things go hand in hand, don't they? The, well, three things really, there's the, the speed, the lighting and the crossings, the three key issues, and they can't be, they, they have, they do go all together. And I, but I think also, following on from what councillor Touchbury said, we've got to learn from these mistakes and make sure that in future developments, we've thoughted through more homistically about them, particularly about safety issues, lighting, the, the speed limits, where particularly vulnerable people, not just children, vulnerable people cross those.
We're, we're getting off what we're looking at at the moment, which is reporting an enforcement matter. We have had general agreement, I think we do report as enforcement, but Council Touchbury also suggested we write to other people involved.
Yeah.
Do we all agree to that? We must move on.
Just on the point, please don't.
Council Touchbury, there's two other people before you. Castle Harvey again?
I can report on the breach now, because I think we've done, we've done that well. The breach I'm reporting, the captain knows about this, is the air conditioning units outside the vents.
Outside?
The vents, just, just up here.
Right.
Um, I believe the conservation area needs to get commissioned to put vents like that on the outside.
Four enormous ones on fascia board facing the high street. And they are.
That's a very smelly catch.
At the vents?
Yeah.
At the vents, yeah. I mean, places need better preservation due to whoever and everything else, but I think having regulations should still be.
Right. So Catherine's gonna, what?
Catherine's totally up there.
Note of that, right? Uh, Council Davis?
On, on that, I wonder whether they had to move them from behind the premises because of the work going on.
The Grand Junction.
They do have, they do have a back wall. And the, so the sidewall, I think, is the Grand Junction's entry. I don't think you could, apart from anything else, they're going to be wanting big stuff coming through the archways.
Yes, are, are there any other enforcement breaches at the moment? Could I point out at Tesco Car Park, there are two massive generators in front of McDonald's? They're not on, I checked the plans today, they're not shown on the plans.
Oh, really?
Could we ask what's happening to those?
Somebody rang that recently. They're not, they're not on, on, maybe it's electricity, that's where they get.
But they're, they're not shown on, these generators are not shown on their car park, which we approved, so it's an enforcement matter.
Yeah. We, we definitely spoke about this in a meeting recently, I know we have.
Right.
But not in a public one?
No, it's in one of our meetings.
I haven't heard it.
It was on Facebook, a lot, a lot of conversation on Facebook. No, I don't, not Facebook.
I saw it this morning when I was at Tesco, no.
Not drunk yet, honestly. They definitely spoke about it.
I remember talking about it.
Yeah.
Any, so that's, any other breaches at the moment? Council Touchbury? Um, Council Touchbury?
Can I just say that, going back to the conversation everybody had, let's try not to get all those things confused into one, like, let's get, like, all those issues to do with the thirty, the lighting and the cycleway, let's try and deal with them as separate items.
Yeah, we're only talking about this enforcement.
No, that's fine, I just worry that we could get it very, very mixed up.
Um, after item thirteen, oh, sorry, I'll receive information, a new case number, which is thirteen, Castle Street, Catherine?
Yes, it's the old management building, it has been addressed recently, right on the corner of Elm Street. It's listed and it's a change of use and change of signage. And the lady in charge of the charity that's running it is addressing the community board at its next meeting, possibly doneing one of the funds, who knows? But there are a charity which teaches people to cook what they've got in their food bank parcels, according to the gentleman who was fitting out the kitchen in it when I went round to have a look.
So it's been given a case number anyway?
It's so useful being an elderly lady, you can be as nervous as you want.
Thank you. Applications to foul trees, number thirteen, the updated list is attached for information, all noted. Thank you. Matters to report, members to report any damage to purpose and redundant signage of the town, access issues or other urgent matters. I have just one, which is. I have just one which is that what we all know as Caroline's crossing on the Bletchley Road by the that horse crossing has been there for five years now. I think there are still red signs saying you liars. And we have asked before, I gave Catherine the photographs this morning and she's added it to the what's that one we we're adding it to?
The ones on the Morton Road.
Morton Road, that's right. Yeah, the, the new speed limit.
That's because we haven't gone out on a horse, Caroline.
We haven't yet.
Well, it says we're going to go out on horseback and you and I are going to inspect it.
Is there any other things on that? No, thank you very much. As chairman, I have no item information. So to the next meeting, it's Monday, 7th of March, following the interment council meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very much. Is that the right time, chairman? You've done very well.
Look at the clock.
Yeah, you're right.
We're still alive, chairman.
I can well imagine that there are people who really don't know.
Caroline, let me have that stuff when you get chance.
The gathering meeting people.
Put it this way, renting the
You wavered yourself, John. It's, it's good night for me and it's good night for you.
Well, it will be a night.
Have the magpie. Yeah.
Still streaming. We don't want any
Shall I pull the microphone out and turn it to you by the
I think that might be an option here. I'll take I just think that we need to make sure we get up for the next meeting and that other stuff. Have a bit of a
Play the training.
Okay.